...in America and to their public for which it stands, one nation under God in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
You change this to the agenda.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
So what?
Motion by Bird.
Second.
Second by Timmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. All right, general business.
I'd like to thank the Council for coming in early on a Friday morning. In discussions with the mayor, we felt that this meeting was necessary given that our next regularly scheduled meeting is until next Thursday, given the COVID-19 pandemic and the impact it's currently having on the society in general and on our own operations. We felt that waiting until the next meeting would not be a wise idea, and we not only have some items that we should be discussing today, but we wanted to provide an opportunity for the Council to have discussions in the interim in case it was needed. So the purpose of the meeting today really is to go over a number of items that are COVID-19 related, those included, but are not necessarily limited to. It's really discussions of discussion about whether or not we want to do a declaration of local emergency, if so, when and under what conditions, the status and format of our public meetings, commission meetings, council meetings, et cetera, going forward in the interim during crisis, order of succession for active mayor, basically providing an additional layer beyond just the mayor and the active mayor, what happens if COVID mayor and active mayor are incapacitated, so to speak. COVID-19-related employment policies, which was originally going to be a broader discussion, but given the FANS Act that was just passed on Wednesday, that had, or excuse me, on Wednesday, that has kind of changed the discussion a little bit, and I asked Andre to take a look into that, and then just an operational briefing for the Council and then answer any questions that you have related to the topic. The first item that I have for the Council to discuss is the declaration of local emergency. So as you know from discussions that I've had with you individually and from the Council report, is that pursuant to Minnesota state statute, we have the ability to declare a local emergency. In doing so, that does a number of things. Broadly stated, it provides us with greater flexibility as an organization to respond to the unforeseen and unknown that might be really. Most people typically think of this as it might relate to a natural disaster, straight-line winds coming through the community, flooding, something like that. Pandemics are a little bit different, and quite honestly, this is new territory for everybody, so it's a little bit hard to anticipate what that might consist of. But the things that it does do for us is it allows us to enter into contracts and incur obligations for dealing with whatever the issue might be in a more efficient manner, and it allows us to exercise the powers that were provided under state statute in times of emergency. To a large degree, it provides us at an administrative level to do a lot of things that we normally have to come back to full Council, such as entering into contracts, purchasing, certain purchasing limitations are removed, et cetera. It does, in talking with Andre, also remove other certain requirements under state statute. So let's, for example, let's say we feel the need to pass a local ordinance that's in response to the crisis under normal state statute, we would have to post that on our website for 10 days before we would be able to act on it. We would be exempted from those types of notification requirements, et cetera. In order to declare a local emergency, the mayor has to declare it. Nobody else can. Council cannot supersede the mayor, cannot go around the mayor. It's the mayor's decision whether or not to declare emergency. Now, once the mayor has declared the emergency, it is in place for three days. In order to extend that, then the Council does have to, through a majority vote, pass a, an extension of the proclamation resolution that extends that, and it remains in place until the Council passes another resolution that basically ends the local emergency. In discussions with the mayor, the mayor wanted to have a discussion with the Council today about the declaration of emergency. One, the need, but two, if we're not doing it today, when should we do it? So he has a level of comfort and understanding where the rest of the Council is at if he's put in a position where he feels he needs to proclaim a local emergency. So we'll start there. Are there any questions about the declaration of local emergency in general that you have for staff, either myself or the emergency management director or Andrea when she arrives?
I, just looking at the whole points under the declaration, yeah, some of the, so employment of temporary workers, what would that look like? What would that be?
So that might be a situation where you have a train that comes through the community and you're just hiring people to come work on temporary cases to be clean up and things like that.
Okay.
Basically circumventing a normal hiring process related to those injuries.
And if someone in City Hall comes down with COVID, or, I don't know, someone in the police force to where there's multiple people that need to be quarantined, it's not like we can go out and just hire a police officer.
For the current type of disaster, that's not something that's very likely to happen where we'd hire temporary.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And then the limitations upon tax levies, I, that kind of caught my attention. Was, what was that?
Andrea.
Morning, Andre.
Limitation on tax levies?
Yes.
Actually, I don't know anything about that at this point.
I believe it may provide us certain exemptions for any limitations that might exist with regards to tax levies, so we may be able to, if we have to spend money, we can spend money even though we've already leveled our taxes. We may have the ability to just spend beyond that for emergency purposes without limitation as.
Does it actually impact anyone's individual taxes or anything at this point?
No. And given the nature of this type of emergency, we have general fund reserves that are in place, mostly the impact of something like this at this point. We don't have local resources to combat pandemics, so most of the resources we'd be looking at, most of the things that would impact us are more service-related as we're shutting things down.
Right. If I may as well, a lot of times federal emergencies will follow, so if you do have to spend, say, other cities have spent $20,000 on a contract for tuition services or supplies or something, if well documented, a lot of times those will be reimbursed. That'll make your time under some type of, not 100% guaranteed, but a lot of time.
That is the primary reason that other cities are passing declarations. When I'm talking to my peers and elected appointed officials in other cities, is following the historical course that these follow, is there's a feeling that if they have already incurred or expect to be incurring expenses which might potentially be reimbursed, declaring a local emergency provides a clear definition for making those emergency expenditures and a timeframe for it, and based on, for instance, if you're working with FEMA or the places, may have, may, in this thing, nobody knows, but it may impact your eligibility potentially for some of that reimbursement money. Today, we have had no notable extra expenses related to the emergency other than the $15 we spent to purchase the Zoom license, so, but that doesn't mean that we might not tomorrow or the day after.
Well, I mean, and I guess I would add to that, too. What we're doing at our place of business is, I mean, we're assuming that, well, we're tracking everything, anything related to COVID-19 discussions and meetings we're having so that we can potentially submit an insurance claim for the time that all of us managers are spending dealing with this outside of the normal business hours. I mean, that would be an expense that you guys are probably already dealing with, and to some extent, having meetings, meeting with teams, meeting, I mean, that's, could be reimbursable.
It can be safe to say that for the last seven days, I've done nothing but COVID-19.
So it's, potentially you could get reimbursed for even staff time preparing?
Correct. Now, we know the President's declared an emergency, there's been broad statements about relief, there's been some specific stuff. The reality is, nobody knows at this point what nature and amount that relief might take or how it might be implemented. The one concern I could see related to that specific issue of the declaration is if everybody else declared it and became the norm and you didn't, you might be left out. But the reality is, we don't know. And the other concern is that they won't know until after it's done and they start making up the rules with regards to, this is what you're going to get and this is how you're going to receive it. So that is, that's potential. Now, with regards to implementing a declaration, it required, to initiate it, it requires the mayor to make proclamation. From a practical standpoint, if we got to that point, I could call the mayor and say, "Mr. Mayor, you have a copy of the declaration in front of you, you have it in your little red envelope and sealed envelope with the, at home, whatever, and I would recommend that you do it if it was appropriate. He could declare the emergency, I could get his signature on that piece of paper at the earliest, convenient moment. It's in place." So it's not as if he couldn't do it in fairly quick order. It would have to be, the wheels would have to be coming off the truck from a societal standpoint for me not to be able to get ahold of Joe, have him do a proclamation in his absence, not be able to get ahold of Kate and have her do a proclamation, and if we pass the resolution that's recommended, then Josh, then Dawn, at some point, we should be able to get ahold of somebody if we need to. So from that standpoint, it's, I don't think it's a high risk that we won't be able to get it rolling. There are other reasons that cities have done it, my discussions with them. One of them, to put it simply, is optics. Although, let's say, "No, we're not doing it for optics purposes," in the conversation inevitably comes out that they're doing it to communicate to the public that they have a plan and that they're being proactive and that they're doing something. The other reason that cities have done it is it provides clear justification for some of the policy changes and some of the actions that they're taking. Even if those actions could have been taken without the declaration, it basically removes, it basically provides additional justification. So for example, we're going to shut down City Hall. Could we do that normally? Could I do that administratively? Yeah! But it provides a little bit of additional justification and answers some additional questions related to it, and in some cases, removes a certain level of pushback that you might get to certain decisions that the city might make operationally or from a policy standpoint. And then the other reason that I have heard is that some cities, it allows the cities to arguably exercise the force majeure language in a city contract, so that's the language in contracts, basically say, "The contract is null and void," or you're able to not necessarily be held to the terms of this contract because there's this act of God that's beyond any, that's, that's above and beyond, that's beyond anybody's control, I mean, that's a virtual.
That's close enough.
And that can allow cities to do it. There's, that's certain cases where, I mean, that a city has done this because they had certain permits in place that they wanted to basically revoke, and that made it very clear that they had revoked. It basically provided them with the chance to revoke those permits and provided some protection for those entities who had financial investments and the activities associated with those permits to come back against the, back against the city. Example of that might be, whether they have a good case or not, you have somebody that has scheduled a way in park shelter for a wedding reception, and we cancel that reservation, even if we have a right to. We can say, "It was a public emergency, it was a local emergency, state federal emergency, we canceled it, and your bride's a, doesn't come back and sue you because of that. So there are some potential benefits associated with that. Might, we have those in place anyways because there's already been a state and federal emergency declared. Possibly it's just that extra, that extra layer.
I was just going to mention, the feds are going to likely make available about a half billion dollars in disaster relief, and it may require at some point that we do declare an emergency so that we can maybe get reimbursement response. But right now, I think it's more important to keep track of our expenses that we have for this, so as this stuff becomes available, we can, we can apply, apply for these grants as well, too.
So to follow up on that, if we're tracking stuff now, but we haven't declared a local emergency, does anything we track up to this point matter? Or is it only after we declare the local emergency that tracking really comes into effect?
Typically, it's from the time that you declare the emergency. I'll defer to the phrase experience, but in training that I've been to, it typically is from the time that you declare an emergency or the day that you declare the emergency.
Well, I don't know if it has to be on a city level. There's a great possibility we could do it under the state. State has declared it, the governor has declared it. I've never seen anything on the reimbursement stuff. I've dealt with a ton that states that the actual city has to do it as well. And I would argue that if you can show it's COVID-related, you were prepping even before the state of emergency, it would be because it's all under the state and the federal declarations. I think that's more indicative, and the Council as well, so.
So what's the downside of doing it? I mean, what, I mean, what limitation, if any, are there if we do declare it?
There's none.
I would say that if we had this discussion a week ago, I would have said there's an optics issue to it, so as we all know, there's been a certain level of height, anxiety associated with COVID-19, and at that time, declaring it may have added to that level of anxiety at this point. Aside from Lonsdale, I believe we're the only city in Scott County and our other immediate neighbors that has not declared a state of emergency. So I think at this point, people are kind of just desensitized to it, so I don't know that it would have the same impact it might have had a week ago. The other thing is that the Council has to be aware that when you declare a state of emergency, you guys are taking your fingers out the steering wheel to a certain degree. You're basically handing a fair amount of discretion over to Brady and I to do what we need to do and do it. Now, if you feel that that's necessary and okay, great, but if you don't feel that that is necessary at this point, at that time, Brady and I are comfortable with that as well.
The mayor does, the temporary mayor does stay at the top of the emergency management chain due to our emergency management policy, but that's typically just, you know, checks and balances, but there is, the mayor or term is at the top of that emergency management response, but all the response power is typically.
What is staff's argument?
We had a discussion that involved the mayor earlier in the week, and at that time, we didn't feel it was necessary. To be honest, I'm kind of on the fence with it right now, primarily because I know that if we do get to a point where I feel we do need to declare a state of emergency, we can do so in very rapid fashion. There's always the unforeseen that might occur, but. I think some arguments to not do it are lesser today than they were also earlier in the week as well. I don't know that I personally have a strong opinion either related to it. I'm not specifically recommending it, but we have, you know, but I'm not recommending not to do it either. I know that's kind of middle of the road, I don't know that it's like that, but I would definitely recommend it. I know in talking with some of my peers, I have discussed with them that we haven't done it yet and some of the rationale for it, and they've encountered it. They did it and they did it immediately, they, for all the reasons that we're talking about, which may, do it to provide the maximum flexibility, there's no downside to it. So it's kind of a, it's a, you know, no downside, potential upside type of approach to this. And if the great unforeseen did happen, they put everything in place for the appropriate people to have the powers and discretion that they would need. Brady, how you, and then Brady's opinion?
Mine is, we're in uncharted territory. I don't know, I don't have the historical perspective, when's the last time we declared an emergency, so there's no past practice. And I think we're operating today, we've had no real COVID-related costs, all of our PPE and everything we have, we've had in our stores for years, from what I've heard, so I do not have a strong feeling as a emergency management director that I can't do my job without it. Nothing's going to change for me, no procedurals, no anything, and I really do think it's more of a financial in the future, and I think with our ability to instill that immediately by one phone call and have that declared, I actually am also right down the line, and I do not have a recommendation for or against because we're in uncharted times. If this was a tornado, or power lines, or a flood, or disaster, gas meeting break, I think we'd have more clear direction, but with this, I also have a dozen, you know, say this one way, and I think it should be your decisions on what you base this.
Andrea, what about Brady? I'm fairly conservative, and I feel like you need the tools in the toolbox, they're there for you, so I don't, if there's no downside, I feel like putting in a crisis, getting ahead of the game.
Don?
Do we have to declare an emergency to talk about the use of paid time off for staff?
No, no, that's a separate issue.
Okay.
Any questions?
I do have a question, or a question. Let's say, Brady, you come down with COVID-19, do you have another emergency management person that takes over for him?
Actually, Craig Bell is a certified emergency management director. Brady's still in the process, so as the senior, if something, and Craig has served as the CEO in the past, so I think the natural order of succession is if Brady was out of commission. But even if he had it, that's not like he couldn't work remotely, be communications with the department, but let's say he was completely incapacitated, Craig Bell would be the natural successor within the department. So there is a succession plan within the department.
Okay. I love this kind of offer.
No, it's a good question.
Well, and that's one of the good questions, we'll talk a little bit more during operations, but if, even if our department was completely put out of commission, we have mutual aid with other neighboring departments and the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department's already obligated to respond to emergencies, but we have mutual aid with other departments to help address law enforcement issues within the community.
So, yeah, I had been meeting with Tom and Brady earlier in the week, kind of discussing that, and I've probably been annoying to Tom and Brady, just constantly calling up those dumb questions and stuff, but I'd tell you, nod your head, Tom.
Not dumb questions, they're good questions.
I, you know, at the beginning of the week, I was, kind of, I was like, "Tom, I just, I don't feel we need to do this. I just don't know that there's, that we need to consider ourselves in crisis mode. We can move pretty quickly, we can do all the things that we need to do as a city." What, you know, what's been kind of weighing on me the last couple of days is, what does every other city know that we don't know? Why are they doing this that we're not doing this? Which in and of itself is not a good reason to do something, but you also can't really escape that either. It's hard to not, you know, recognize that. The other thing is, maybe the, I kind of hate the word optics, but maybe it's not the worst thing. I got a call yesterday from someone asking who they can call to complain to if someone's not following the declaration and still having their business open. And that kind of, that really bugged me. If people aren't taking this seriously, maybe we're not doing a good enough job of...
Modeling.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm kind of torn. I know I can make the declaration or I would need to, but I don't want to do that in a, in a vacuum. I want the rest of the Council, you know, to give me their thoughts and make sure we're all on the same page. So I, I mean, are we, are we ready to make a decision on that, or should we maybe set that aside, go through these other things and get the operations briefings and stuff? City Council, what do you guys, how would you like to proceed?
So, if you, I got a strong opinion, so.
You do?
Sure.
Yeah? He wants to weigh in.
I mean, I can wait, I can go first, then, here. I mean, I think it would be foolish to not, for modeling effect to what you were just saying, to make sure that others think that, I mean, because it is a serious thing. And, I mean, we're seeing that in the healthcare field right now, too, and everybody slow to respond are the ones that are going to get their asses kicked in this, I mean, down the road. And I would, I mean, from the optics piece of it, I, I mean, I think it doesn't show that we're taking it necessarily, seriously, and, I mean, the governor's close to potentially locking things down altogether and to think that we're not even considering it. I mean, if there is no downside to limiting the work that everybody can do, I mean, I see absolutely zero reason to do it, I think. And then especially down the road for expenses, I would hate for it to come back and bite us that we didn't have it in place and now we can't reduce costs or different things like that, and, I mean, no, I think, absolutely support in doing it, and then just figure out how we make sure that we extend it and tie it to the governor's thing and.
So would that being said, I have a question, sorry. You said you had a phone call the other day about a business not shutting down.
I don't know what business.
Yeah, I know, but if we did do this and that business was still running, what are our options to get them to?
I mean, what I found out is the call needs to go to the state attorney. I don't know if you disagree with that or not, but, yeah.
I can address that in my report if you'd like, at that time, that's a good question.
That's what we have.
We have addressed it with us, you know, almost, staff.
So Josh is for making the declaration, Kay agrees with Josh.
Yeah, I do, too.
Don, Amanda?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, because if, like, if the governor were to shut everything down, then while we're not in, it still would be relatively simple for you guys to get in contact, why risk it in case you, you can't get in contact with anyone?
And Don, you were at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not so much today, it's a week from now.
Yeah.
All right.
It doesn't hurt to not have it in place, so why not just do it?
Right.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and declare.
So with that said, then do we have to hold another special meeting come Monday to extend it, or?
If Council wants in this direction, what I would recommend that the mayor does is make proclamation 20-01, declaring a local emergency pursuant to the draft that's not provided. Once that's been done, the Council can immediately follow by approving Resolution 20-20, a resolution enacted under the authority of Minnesota state statutes to extend a period of a mayor declaring local emergency.
So how does that, can I just say that, or do I?
You could, you can just declare the emergency and sign the proclamation?
Yeah, you can just say, "I'm making proclamation 20-01 and signing it."
I'm officially taking proclamation 20-01, an emergency? All right, we've declared.
And then, it has been declared, so that would not fade away, but the Council, as I showed, since we got Resolution 20-20, which would be a resolution enacted under the authority of Minnesota state statutes 12.29 and 12.37 to extend the period of a mayor declaring local emergency.
So that's what a motion would be?
Yep, so that is, so moved would be.
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Novak.
Second.
Second by Timmerman. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
If it's okay with the Council, since we're in a, in a motion-making mood, I'm going to step down to the succession for the active mayor. As we were talking through this internal, and having some discussions with Andre, we started talking about the benefits of declaring a local emergency. One of the issues, of course, was can you get ahold of the mayor and act in that? The question came up, okay, but what if all of those are, if we have nothing in policy or in the boardings that specifically states how you would do that? You would actually have to continue remaining in Council, and then have to appoint another active mayor. So what I'm acting, if we do adopt this, this would run beyond this particular incident. This would, going forward, is basically creating a succession plan within the Council for the active mayor position should the active mayor and the appointed, manually appointed active mayor be incapacitated. It's very simple, it goes by order of seniority, by who's been on the Council longer, and if you have two Council members that have served the same amount of time, it would go based on age.
So are we looking for, to discuss further, or just discuss names, or what do you?
Well, there's no names, it's just, this is, it's a process.
You're not looking for us to appoint a specific individual?
No, it just, it says that in the event that you're, and under these circumstances, if you were incapacitated, which would require the active mayor, but the normally appointed active mayor was also likewise incapacitated or unavailable, it would just automatically default to be a man who's been on the Council longer, in this case.
It would be Josh.
In the future, it could be somebody else.
Right.
And if, let's say, Josh and Don came on the Council at the same time, it would just be who's going first, so.
So Josh, is Josh then acting? Josh is an acting, acting mayor?
Yes.
Basically?
Yes.
Congratulations, Josh.
So if the Council agrees with that, I would recommend an option 20-21, Resolution 20-1.
Motion by Timmerman.
Second.
Second by Steve Prasad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Is there a benefit to having that written down, so someone who might not know how old Don is and Josh and Amanda are, that establish that order?
Just saying, put the birth dates out in the public.
No, 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 but just, so, I mean, like, emergency management director, if I can't, if you're down and you're down, and now I know Josh, but I don't know who else.
I think we're all staggered anyway, the timelines.
So right now, it's basically an order in which they're ceding, if we do that, with the order.
All right.
All right, that's a good enough meeting.
So, having had that discussion, we did want to talk to the council and get some feedback and direction related to the status and format of public meetings. As you know, we've canceled the CC/EC meetings for both March and April due to a large degree that with the Easter egg being, Easter egg hunt being canceled, there isn't a ton of stuff on their agenda, so it was easy to do. We have canceled the planning commission meeting. The one application item that was on there that had a hearing was going to be continued anyways, so that got moved into the April meeting, which would be at the end of April. The only regular meeting is the housekeeping end that was not quite sensitive, so we have canceled that so far. Going forward beyond that, though, because there are discussions now that with the flattening of the curve, it is pushing out into possibly May where some of these restrictions or concerns may be in place even beyond April. We want to have some discussions about what your intent is going forward through the summer and also what you would like to do with regards to council meetings. And there's a couple of elements to it. One is meeting cancellations. How aggressive do you want to be with canceling public meetings? And we're talking about, for this case, meetings that would qualify as open meetings under open meeting law. So we're talking stainless committees, commissions, and council meetings. Two, content. Everything that we would normally do, we would normally do at those meetings, whether moving forward regardless of the format. But the content would be everything we would normally do to the degree that we can. Or no, we're going to really limit what we're doing because of the nature of the meetings, concerns for transparency, let's say if we go to remote meetings, to only those things we have to do. And anything else that isn't a have-to-do gets just shifted until later in the year. A couple of considerations with regards to meeting content are bandwidth in the office. Right now, the two main staff members that have been impacted by this so far really are just Brady. Brady is constantly sifting through just a pile of email and other administrative items in his roles, the emergency management director and the chief of police. And mine, the administrative items related to a lot of this, you guys are aware of a lot of that because of the number of calls I've had with you, that will likely start to lessen to a certain degree once things normalize in crisis mode, so to speak. But if we move to having to remote office with our staff or something like that, that could have a big impact on your level of efficiency and ability to move things through. So I wanted to get some feedback on that. And then the last thing was just meeting format. So if we are holding public meetings, are we holding meetings, open meetings here or are we moving to a call-in meeting approach? And if not now, when and under what circumstances? So I guess the first question is, holding meetings. How, the direction from the council on how aggressive you want us to be in holding meetings? And that's also really, gets back to content of meetings as well.
Well, I don't know why we have to have any meetings. We don't have to have a planning commission meeting. We don't have parks commission meetings. If we can do them remotely, I think we should do that. I would suggest the same for city council meetings. But interested to hear what others think.
I agree. I think if we can do things remotely, we just do it remotely.
Okay. What that would mean from a practical standpoint is right now with the council, we have the technology to be able to do a video conference online call. I provided you with statutory manuals of laws for call-in meetings under pandemic to authorize that. Basically, Joe, myself, Andrea simply have to say that we feel that that condition has not met and we can afford of doing that. We have that clear authority with regards to, one, a local declaration, a state federal declarations. There's no question that we have the equipment to do that. There's two ways that that would happen in practice. You guys would not need to come. One is we would leave City Hall open. We would have, it basically be the council chambers with nobody at the front. We would have a staff person here who would facilitate the meeting and act as the facilitator for any public that wanted to attend or address the council as part of that meeting. If we got to the point where we didn't want to have a public here, we can do that. But to the degree that's practical and within the limits of technology and reasonable cost, we can allow, we need to provide an opportunity for people to participate. If there's cost to them, there's a cost to them. The way we would probably do it with the council, if we're using Zoom, is if people wanted to participate in the meeting, we just advertise, if you want to participate in the meeting, we have the capacity to allow X number of people to actively participate. And we could send them the invitation and then they could participate in the meeting. So there's a lot of ways with which we could do it. We have to work out the fine points of that. It becomes a little more difficult with the commissions. Our commissions do not have the same capacity that the council has. We don't have, we haven't pushed out in the organization that kind of technology. We are in the process of equipping the planning commission with laptops, similar to what you have, for, just to be able to go fully electronic with them and give them more tools for practical purposes. And we're having that discussion well before the COVID-19 crisis. We have had no plans under normal circumstances that really wouldn't even need to provide that same level of technology with parks or CC/EC or other commissions at this. We don't have any other commissions, but any others that might be established because of the nature of what they do on a regular basis. Planning commission might be a little more difficult. That one would be a call-in and we probably just have to set up some form of a conference call in order to do it. That becomes problematic because much of what they do is visual because of dealing with plans and other stuff. That one becomes a little more difficult. On this one, we've already pushed out, extended 120 days for that application due to things that are just specific to that application. If we get to the end of that time period, we may need to hold a meeting regardless to act on that particular application. I am working with Cleat, our IT guy, to work on the laptop issue. I had a lengthy discussion with him yesterday, but one of the problems you're running into is where do all of our laptops come from? China. Or other places that are significantly hit by the virus. And so the question is what supplies are out there currently? Whether or not we can even get those out to our commissioners? Get them in time and get them out to our commissioners for that meeting? So that one, I don't know that we can answer today, but just letting you know there might, we may need to hold a meeting related to that. If we did, we do what we're doing here. We do social distancing within the room, et cetera. CC/EC, right now, if you look at what their normal workload is, one is egg hunt in the spring, that's been canceled, so that eliminated the need for meetings. The next item is going to be the community festival. That's going to be a whole discussion in itself. Now that you've declared the emergency, the decision, although we might seek feedback, the decision on whether or not that happens is going to be the greatest decision. And then we'll have the mayor, bless it. But that's a decision we don't need to make right now. That's a decision that we will probably be making, quite honestly, towards the middle to end of May. We'll push it out as long as we can. I do know that other community festivals are already having discussions about shutting down, but their planning lead time and organizational lead time due to the scale of each of them is much longer than ours. We're a little more efficient that way because of the scale of our community festival. So we can wait a little bit longer before we decide to pull the trigger on her. So what I'm hearing is remote meetings when possible. Is that fair?
And, I mean, and I think to somehow be able to allow the public to remotely check in is preferred over this because all we're doing then is encouraging them to come into a group setting. And I think them are modeling mixed messages. So if there's a way to allow either call-in or Zoom access or something, I think that's the way we're going to get people to actually participate.
Some of the cities that I think would adjust for hard-on livestream as opposed to a collaring feature?
I was just going to ask that, but is there any reason we can't do that? Well, just from a technical standpoint, I mean, is there a reason we can't?
We would have to look and see if we can do it to the livestream of the meeting. That is not participation, though, and that's, that's a service. That's not what we're talking about with regards to wanting to participation. Does that, does not allow participation. It's just more timeliness of them getting the information. We're really talking about participation. And we're either talking a conference call. But even with conference calls and those types, I think it's not an open line. We don't have that technological capability. We would have to tell people that if you were looking, it would be similar. I don't know how many of you saw the Facebook post where I responded to that member of the public about attending the meeting today. Did anybody see that?
I didn't see that, no.
We had a member of the public that basically said, is today's meeting an open meeting? And I said, yes, it is an open meeting. However, we would ask people that are interested in the topic of the meeting to, you know, exercise precautions with COVID-19. So first, we asked them to assess their, one, that we're posting them afterwards, like we typically do. So if they're interested in the topic material, it'd be a matter of. If they feel they need to attend the meeting today, we'd ask them, you know, assess your need to really be here. Do you need to be at the meeting knowing that we're going to be posting it after the fact? If you do, we'd ask that when you come, you exercise social distancing and appropriate hygiene elements related to COVID-19. And if they are ill, because even if they're ill, if we have an open meeting, we can't, you know, well, now under the emergency proclamation, maybe we might have some authority. But we ask that they would call us ahead of time and then we could talk to them individually about what they're doing. We might be able to set up special accommodations for them, et cetera, to accommodate for that. So my, we have that situation where if they're calling in, we would say, okay, if you're going to be coming or you want to participate in the meeting, you have to contact us ahead of time. We will provide you with an invite into the conference or the online meeting, et cetera. If they don't have the capability, like they don't have a computer at home, sorry. We are allowed under state statutes within, we can make reasonable accommodations within, you know, costs and technological capabilities, et cetera. For instance, if we utilize Zoom for the meeting, there's a limited number of ITs that could participate. So we'd encourage people, don't get on the Zoom meeting just to be on the Zoom meeting. If you have an actual item, you're applying to interact, you have an item that you're specifically going to be addressing. Now, if they still want to participate, right, it's an open meeting, we would provide that ability, but we would encourage people to use common sense about their need to actually be participating at that, at that level. Streaming capability, we can do it if we're holding a meeting like this, streaming in a Zoom meeting. Zoom does not have that capability. You can record the meeting. So one of the great features and one of the reasons we're going that direction is we can actually record the whole meeting, that screenshot of that remote meeting, and then we can turn that into a video and we can post that. So many, but you would still be able to have, in a sense, the same ability they have in Washington that they have today. So there will be limitations given the seriousness of the epidemic. There's nothing you can do about it, but we do have the ability, but it would require information typically to the full conference or for them to participate.
But just, just to clarify, Tom, you aren't required to allow people to participate remotely? You're required to, can we have them monitor the meeting? So you don't have to include that as a part of your meeting preparation if it's just not there at the moment?
Correct. Okay. You looking for direction on anything here or just explaining?
Just explaining.
Okay.
So given that, and that we're going through remote meetings when possible, what is the feedback we have related to content? Because it's not as accessible as it would be under normal circumstances. Do you want for that purpose? I don't think bandwidth is as big of an issue currently because we're still responding to work and all still in the office. That may change. But I think it's more of the accessibility and transparency issue. Do you want to be holding conversations or reviewing certain types of items unless it's absolutely necessary? Because people don't have the ability to attend a local or a regional meeting or not.
I have an opinion, but go ahead.
Well, I don't have as much concern about council meetings. I mean, and the content here, I mean, I'd be curious to know how much of our stuff is stuff that we don't need to be talking about that we're making these movies shorter anyway. But I assume most of the stuff, most of the stuff we do talk about, I mean, I think fits right into all of our meetings. I just, I have more concern about, like, disrupting the process for the planning commission and disrupting the activities of the city to be able to continue to allow development to happen and different things like that. So I'm not as concerned about us as I am about the other commissions, piece of it.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't know that there's anything that we need to just cut from our regular meetings for any reason.
So the types of things I would be talking about is Haley has been working diligently on fulfilling our directives with regards to policy discussions. Council requires workforce and corporate housing, which is one of those policy items that the council only talked about before this came up. We were planning on having that discussion probably in April. End of April. That would be the type of thing where it's not time-sensitive? Is that the type of thing that you would continue to want to have? We'd be doing it remotely. You can pull up the presentation. You'll be able to see the presentation rolling through and you'll have the little video squares, as you'll see in a little bit here, of everybody's faces. Do you still want to continue as normally as we can with regards to agenda content?
I think that we should.
I mean, unless there's a major drain on your guys' bandwidth, you know, then we adjust.
No, I think, I think where we would run into issues is, one, if we end up having, if somebody comes down ill or we have to quarantine somebody and that's in a role for a particular agenda item that's coming forward, that would have an impact. The other impact would be if we actually get to a situation where we're changing our current staffing. And we'll talk about that under operations. But if we're changing how we operate at City Hall and it makes things less efficient and therefore has some bandwidth impacts, then that might change. But currently, that, that situation doesn't exist. Okay, I think I've got, I had a bit of feedback on that. The next item would be related to COVID-19-related employment policies. So I had discussions one-on-one with all of you that we probably should be having discussions about what the city's policy position is related to pay, related to employees that are impacted by COVID-19 and having a definitive answer to it, if for no other reason that the employees need to know where they stand and where things are at. Because I'm already getting all kinds of questions on this particular topic. Earlier in the week, in talking with other cities, their approach to it, in some, were consistent in some ways and all over the place in other ways. So consistently, what I had seen from other municipalities, discussions that I'd had with my peers prevailing thought was if somebody was not ill but had to be sent home to quarantine for whatever reason, but basically they're willing and able to work, but we're sending them home, they would continue to receive pay and be expected to work from home to the degree or remotely to the degree that they could. If they can't, they cannot. If they can, to a high degree, great. But we were putting them on the bench to one degree or another. It's our choice, we can take the ban. Where there is a broader spectrum of responses was related to, so what if they are going home to care for us, an individual who is sick with COVID-19? They are ill with COVID-19, but it comes down to that they're sick or they're a care provider to somebody who is sick. The responses to that ranged all over the board from, that's why you have paid time off. We provide you with paid time off. That's, use it. To, all the way up to, no, if you have any of these qualifying things, you get paid your regular full-time wage and it does not count against your existing paid time off. Up until Wednesday, that was an open discussion I was planning to have with the council, but the President signed into law the Families First Act, which basically provided certain federal requirements with regards to pay. That came up relatively shortly. It was just Wednesday night. We're working on the memo. I had Andrea take a look at it and I would ask her to give a quick summary of how it would apply to us as an employer of under 500 employees. This may circumvent or puts us in a tighter box.
So the, what the new act does is it requires cities to provide two weeks of paid leave to employees if they need self-isolate, if they are under a diagnostic or symptoms through coronavirus, if they're under or by a health official, if they need to care for a sister family member or if they have a child who is in school or their care provider has, is unavailable. There's criteria, a variety of criteria in there regarding what the pay looks like. Full-time, it's 80 hours. Part-time, you're doing an averaging of their typical two weeks of pay. There's caps on the amounts that you need to pay per employee.
It's pretty generous, the cap, though.
It is.
It is.
I don't, none of our employees would be impacted by it, so.
Oh, good to know.
I agree.
There is the opportunity, which is not currently clear about emergency responders under that. You may have some. If the Secretary of Labor makes a determination, you may be able to exclude emergency responders from this requirement. And there's, there's other criteria that we don't need to get. Those are kind of the guts of it. Then there's also an extension of Family Medical Leave Act of 12 weeks. First 10 days do not need to be paid. That's up to the city. And then you would need to make payments after that for emergency medical leave up to 12 weeks. Again, there's some criteria related to who's eligible. It's very similar to the emergency paid sick leave requirements and some caps in there. It's up to two-thirds of their pay. But I think that only applies in the event of a school. No, no, it is not lasting for the first year. That does allow you to school. So I, I think the other element is that this is in addition to what you already provide. It's not, you can't take away what you currently have. And you can't require employees to use current leave for the first, this can be opposed. So I would put it in the action this time, but we're not getting the policy in place.
Some. The evolving trend that I have seen with what some other cities are doing, because everybody this last week is finally on that point in this process where they're starting to have these discussions. Only a few cities have actually acted on it that I've seen. A lot of them are moving in a direction that generally reflected what actually was mandated by federal law to one degree or another. There was a number of variations to it, but it was moving in that general direction of what I've seen in cities evolving this way currently is the two weeks of paid leave, which is essentially what you're seeing here. This probably goes a little bit further and into a higher level of detail than a lot, some of those policies that I've seen. And some of the cities I don't know where I'm going to have to go back and now we've worked our policies to be consistent with federal law. So we would, at this point, recommend to council, unless you wanted to go above and beyond what is provided for under the Families First Act, we would then recommend to the council that we would just prepare a policy that would reflect what federal law states.
May I ask a stupid question? Why would we exclude the emergency workers? So they're not allowed, if they get COVID-19, they're?
I think that that would probably be a moral purpose for it, out there and requirements.
So, so what it would do is hypothetically, you could have, I don't have any strong concerns with our department, but if you think about like Patrino that went through New Orleans, their long, their emergency man, emergency people, they just disappeared. They packed up their family and just left. In this particular situation, what you're doing is you're not creating an easy incentive for them to just not show up for work. Now, on the flip side, we, if you're doing that, we, if you're asking them to show up for work, if they actually are sick and they're getting exposed because they are at work, do you want to recognize that as well?
Well, I think if they're actually, if they're sick, they shouldn't be working.
Right.
So then we should be paying them their two weeks to be at home self-isolating. So that's why the excluding them part was confusing.
Well, it's tricky because we don't want our officers voluntarily going, I'm stepping away for COVID. You know what I mean? Because I get this family to do that, I'm just going to take it. We don't want to give them that choice because they are essential. And that's where we determine essential personnel. So we don't want them that, but we also, through their dedication, we don't want them coming to work worried they're not going to get paid as well. So that's kind of the, that's why we separate employees and essential employees is because the critical nature of their jobs to society. So we kind of, that's why, one, it looks like we're there being needed and excluding us. Well, no, it's for essential employees. We have a dedication that we need to protect. But we also don't want them showing up and exposing citizens and exposing people due to their fear of not getting paid.
So what you might do is say, okay, we're a normal employee, it's paid up to 80 hours of total pay. You might say, okay, we're not, we're exempting you from these sections, but we might extend or provide a greater benefit if you actually get sick. There's, so there might be, I mean, these are some of the nuances of the discussion and where you put the emphasis.
What gives us the most flexibility? Probably one of the most flexible. I would think we avoid, but that does depend on position and decisions that we know is.
The greatest flexibility would be doubting, would basically having a policy that directly adheres to federal law. Because you're doing, you're staying within the box, the minimum box that's been provided. And it's set up, anything you'd be doing above and beyond that would, in a sense, be limiting your flexibility or increasing your financial liability if you do anything above and beyond that. So if you're thinking that's not flexible, simply nearing federal law would provide that. I think there's a question, there's just a question about, given the nature of our organization, how do we function and how we think a worst-case scenario might play out? Do we want to do anything above and beyond what is provided for under federal law?
I just have a high level of trust in Brady and yourself and all the department has. I just don't want you guys to have the most flexibility to make the best decisions. If you'd rather not, that's something we should know now.
And that isn't to say that if a particular, if there's an unforeseen circumstance that comes up that's not contemplated, that we couldn't come back to the council and look to amend the policy as necessary based on circumstances. But we do need to have a policy in place so that it's clearly, clearly communicated to employees that this is how it's going to be, this is how it's going to be. I've already had questions from employees that, you know, things like, if I get sent home, but I can't work from home, I'm not working, so do I lose my health benefits? I need questions, questions like that. Well, of course not. It's just like when you normally, you know, leave, you don't remove your health benefits, you have the same level. But these are the types of anxieties that you're starting to have people have in a place. And so if you can remove that and they can focus on their work, otherwise we spend half the day talking about those types of stuff, you know, efficiency, etc., as well.
Okay.
It'd be nice to go back to, I know it was the police department, fire department's volunteered, but go back to them and say, council has stated that per federal, you are also, if you are mandated to stay home, do the exposure that during recovery for those 80 hours, first 80 hours, or the average if you're part-time, without taking away, without taking away your detail. And you're right, so then later this year, go on vacation or, you know, take some time off.
No, the only other thing, I was just going to add to the exemption thing. I mean, that's why, like, emergency medical or EMS folks and healthcare folks can get, still get daycare at school. I mean, so they're making exceptions to all of that stuff to kind of accommodate for, you know, some of the, what appears to be harshness on certain folks and making them essential. And maybe they don't want to be essential all the time. So lots of some of that.
So I'm hearing some agreement up near in the federal. Amanda, you look like you were going to say something. Oh, okay.
As we go through, what I'm hearing is these are our judgment recommendations as we're working through the policy itself, because again, this is, again, we're in reactive mode. This is just me down Wednesday night, so we had 24 hours, you know, 24 hours to actually look at it, so. But I think we have a general direction. Our intent would be to bring something back for the council meeting on Thursday, which leads me to my last item before the operational reports, is that the council fact that may be coming out on Tuesday because we have items such as this that we're still, still working on and money availability to act before this last week has been to the limit. So we're just kind of looking behind.
Understood.
Overall, fact that those areas relatively small, so it'll be a large volume of information created to some purposes.
Okay.
I can just clarify, this comes, this needs to be phrased by April 1st. We have to do that and it only extends to December 1st, so.
The last item on the agenda, unless, and then we'll have an opportunity for a question. We'll want to go through a sample remote meeting, which has become irrelevant based on your direction, is to just go through operational updates. Now, the council's received operational updates in my regular email updates as well as one-on-one conversations that I've had with you, but we wanted to provide the council with a more comprehensive and up-to-date presentation on what each of the work areas are doing and also a discussion about how we may be changing operations as we move forward if we need to. So I guess I'd like to start with Brady, who's also our emergency manager director. Talk about public safety, what they're doing, what they may be doing in the future.
Good morning.
Still, first of all, I've added some items that have been brought up here today. I would first of all state that we're going into uncharted times, but that doesn't necessarily mean scary or dangerous times. One of the biggest things and why I didn't say we need to do it or we don't need to do it is because we don't know and we don't know the future in this type of scenario. We do with other types of scenarios, but this one is just uncharted. Doesn't mean it's bad and the fact that we're the last to do it doesn't mean that's wrong either. Josh had brought up if everybody else is doing it. One of the huge things I've learned since I've come here is our community and our city and the way we do things is different. What faces Parer Lake and Savage and Shakopee and Bell Plain and every other city is not what we face here. And that uniqueness is not a bad thing, it's a good thing. The way our citizens and our community handles things, just because it's a little different doesn't mean it's bad. We love that uniqueness. We're also one of the safest communities and so we're going to face things differently. Our infrastructure is set up different. Our location is different. Our access to businesses and the choices of businesses and the things that the others encounter, we don't. So there's nothing wrong with that and I just want to reassure you of that. And whether you chose to do it or not, it didn't, it didn't matter for how we go about and do our business. We've already been doing this. So our protocols, you know, I was able to explain at a meeting to the mayor, but I'll go over that with you for the police department. We have, much like Public Works, we deal with contaminated people, contaminated substances, drugs and hazards on a daily basis. Hence, I wear a bulletproof vest every day and I have the tools around my belt. So we are equipped to handle this type of situation. But what we have done is altered our business a little bit in how we deliver our service to the community. And where we pride ourselves in going to every call we can, even be a medical, scratch, cut, what have you, we'd like to show our presence and give that bang for the community's taxpayer buck. We've modified that to try to limit the exposure that we face to what could be a potentially bad virus or flu. It's different. We, we go into houses that have the flu and people who don't feel good all the time and where people have passed away all the time, but the difference is the incubation and the quarantine time. As you know, with only six employees right now, about to be seven here soon, something like that can really devastate and shut down our department. You also know our police department's current physical structure and physical. It's very small and compact and not, we have very little remote working where we can separate ourselves from one another. So when there is more than one, but we do have the advantage of we typically have one at a time working. So it limits our exposure. So our protocols is, as of right now, we stopped going to any non-emergent medical where that person's health and welfare is not immediately in danger. We do have paramedics that are stationed in town. We do have a fire department that will respond to medicals as well. They have better equipment and they're able to do that with their gear. But we've stopped going to those non-emergent medicals. I have encouraged my officers, again, which is different than our normal service level, to stop going to any unnecessary non-emergent call in general. If somebody has questions about fraud, we typically want to go and interact with that citizen in person, but we're trying to limit our exposure. So we've stepped back from that. We're going to be handling it in person, but on phone and giving the same level of service we can, but just remotely. I hate it, I don't like it, but it's something I think we have to do to protect, to protect our essential services. So that's the guideline. I've left it up to the officer. If it is something emergent or they feel they got to be there or the call necessitates evidence gathering, taking pictures, when they do have to come in contact, of course, much like we're doing here today, social distancing, staying back, wearing gloves. We've always had gloves on our person. So we've just altered our service response. I don't think it's less, I don't think it's not good or not providing the level of service or, you know, helping crime in any way. It's just, we have to take a step back and reevaluate. We are not a 24/7 police department, so there are times when we do not have officers working. That same protocol sets us up really well for this type of scenario. If we do have officers go down, we already have a known presence in partners in law enforcement with the sheriff's department. I've been in contact with Sheriff Lou Cannon and with a lot of enthusiasm, he says, we will be there for you if needed. We will continue to handle emergency calls that happen in Elko New Market if something should happen. That's called mutual aid. We've already had it in place and that will continue to be, so we don't have to worry. What happens if the sheriff's department gets hit really bad and their smallish deputy pool goes down? Well, if we can't provide service, we have mutual aid joint powers agreements with all the cities in Scott County to help out. I've already been assured by the other chiefs of police that their ability to help will be there the greatest it can be. If they need to send down an officer in a squad car to come roll around in our area and answer calls, they can do that. The entire county's on the same infrastructure, report-wise, dispatch-wise, and we already have all those networks in place. We use the same jail, we use the same emergency procedures. There will not be a loss of service for the city. Pretty much no matter what. So we're safe, we're secure and we will have those through our partners in law enforcement. Craig Bell was mentioned earlier, second command, what happens if something happens to me and I have to self-quarantine, but I feel fine. I have the same computers you do. I have the ability to tap into our records management system, our dispatch system, and I can take my radio home. So I can monitor everything that goes on, so I could still technically lead work from home and administer emergency services. But we have a great resource in Officer Craig Bell, who is a certified emergency management director, and he's also the longest-serving employee, knows the community well, he's there. If not, we have an awesome Josh Garice that can then take over, has supervisor experience, 12-plus years of law enforcement experience and so on and so forth. After that, we have part-time staff that are knowledgeable that can step in and pick up the hours. Next update, PPE, personal protective equipment. As I mentioned earlier, we have stores that we've had for a long time. I feel that are adequate for the immediate future for, depending upon what we face though, at least for the next several months. We have rubber gloves, face masks and disposable face shields that we can use and put in place. We do have a, only one cover-all because we typically don't use those, which is a disposable garment we can put on if we have to go into a situation. We have also done protocols for makeshift PPEs. We have an abundance of rubber raincoats that we have on. And the big thing with this COVID is the air droplets getting onto our, our bodies and our uniform and equipment and then us getting it or spreading it to someone else. So I've advised all the officers protocols for that. If we do have to go into a situation we're unsure of or somebody may be sick or exhibiting flu-like and we just have to go in, put on your rubber raincoat to cover our entire gear. Put on your gloves, put on your face shield and go in there and do it. It might look weird, but one beautiful thing about all that, we can shed that equipment before we get back in our squad car. It can all be washed, the gloves and the face mask can be tossed away. So we are looking at trying to obtain more PPEs. So I'll put that out there. If we could get N95 masks, we'd take them. We don't want to hoard them, but we'd take more. And that, much like everybody else, is dried up even for law enforcement. We're working with our emergency management partners to obtain more of those, either from the National Guard or the federal government. But as of right now, we're, we have them. Our officers are safe from exposures. I put into place protocols for uniforms. These are all polyester and they're that way for a reason. They're easily washed, they don't hold on to biohazard material. I mandated every officer bring in a second set of uniforms, a complete set to have on duty should they be exposed to a known hazard. I've set in place protocol to take that uniform off. We have washer and dryer capabilities here at the fire department to wash fire gear. It's industrial, it's intense, it's meant to get the carcinogens off of their gear. It'll work for ours. it'll work for ours. Disinfect every, all of our equipment before they then put on their new uniform. We have showers here if we believe like your hair and the rest of your skin is contaminated to just basically decontaminate, get in a new uniform and then get back out there for service. So they, we've thought of those things and we put them in place.
Squad cars?
Squad cars are disinfected, the officers have been advised to disinfect their squad cars at the beginning and the end of their shifts. And then to, every officer has hand sanitizer on them and to clean their hands every contact they have.
If there was someone in the backseat, then assuming then they would then disinfected the backseat?
Clean that all down, wipe it all down, it's all plastic and steel back there now, so everything should be able to be wiped down and taken care of.
So they have been instructed on all that. Any more, any questions on any of that stuff before you get too far?
We're doing everything known and that's where we were doing it before the emergency mandate and we'll continue to do it after. What to do if a business doesn't shut down that's been mandated by executive order? Tom and I, the second the executive order came out, we discussed, got on the horn with Andrea to talk about it as well. And in our community, again, limited resources, we're not gonna be the bar police, the restaurant police. What we are gonna do is I'm not gonna, if there is a bar open with people inside drinking, I'm not gonna instruct our one officer working to walk into that bar and demand and cease that, "All business and everybody get out of here." The potential is horrible. One, they're exposing themselves and two, that can be damaging to our community and the relationship with the police department. So I've instructed all of our officers that if they encounter a business that an executive order has mandated no open floor dining room or whatever, that you will document that with a report and an ICR. It'll be forwarded to me and Tom and then it'll be forwarded on to the licensing bureau of the state. It's a state executive order, there is a misdemeanor crime attached to it, but we just feel that that's the better way to affect that business is through their license, through their state business.
I was just gonna ask, is that a good enough reason to pull someone's liquor license or not?
So the, the recommendations that have come down is that, that there's two ways you can handle it. The police department has legal authority to take action and charge someone, but it's an executive order and it's not a violation of our ordinances, because we don't have any ordinances shutting down, you know? So it's a state action to go that course and to run it through their state licensed business. We don't have those ordinances set up and that's the course we feel is best for us, for our capability and our resources that we have. And that, yes, the state has determined that the licensing board through alcohol, tobacco and fire, you know, that licensing bureau then can take action on their, on their license.
The one thing, the one thing to keep in mind is this is newly chartered territory and there's some escape slot at this particular juncture or guidance from the EJ's office or from the Office of Alcohol, Gasoline Control with how enforcement of this is gonna happen. What we would advise when there were its happening is those owners is that there aren't potentially significant penalties, but exactly what they might look like or how it might apply with regards to local license regulations or local civil penalties related to the vehicles we're not supposed to. A lot of that still needs to be...
So I'm here is, we don't know the answer that closely, it's possible that you can lose a liquor license or not have a legal license or something.
Or have other penalties against it.
And I assume we've communicated with the chamber because this is something they should be leading and telling their businesses to comply with everything. I mean, I think that's their role, a role that they could play in all of this.
But will the chief have had discussions with most of the, and is it the process of trying to enable a lot of those business owners to try and aiming and aware of it and get a sense of where their head is at?
All indications from the liquor establishments, only the bars, is that they comply 100%. They realize the reliability that they're under if someone's in there drinking and might contact that, I mean, that's huge liability. But I've been in contact with several of the owners and all of their indications from the other owners are that this is gonna be followed. And one of the tough things are, those are private businesses and establishments, right? So if the owner wants to have 10 people inside and throw a party, I can't do anything about that. And I can't go in without a warrant if it's closed and the door is locked and there's 10 people inside having drinks, doesn't mean they're holding the business. So there's all these complicated factors that go on, even though maybe they're being paid under the table. It's tough and it's uncharted territories. And as we go forward, expectations have to be, again, put to our specific scenario. We have one officer working at a time, I would never put my officer in risk of trying to enforce or investigate banging on the door of a bar, locked bar when people are inside. There's a pers, a certain amount of personal responsibility that someone has to take. We'll document it, we saw 10 people in there, I didn't see any exchange of money or anything like that, but they're sitting around playing cards or something. We'll document that and we'll keep it there in our records management system, but we have to recognize the difficulties for such limited resources. And we don't have 50 businesses of this type, so you can imagine Prior Lake, Lakeville, Burnsville trying to do the same thing. And that's why the departments are going, "Listen, we're, we're already trying to keep up on top of this, now you want us to enforce business laws and executive orders and stuff like that." Which leads to my next, if we do go to a shelter in place or Donna brought up, what do you do if someone doesn't comply, you know, with the executive order? And they don't shelter in place? There's not a lot we can do. I want to set the expectations low, we still haven't, we're not under martial law, right? So the government hasn't shut down our constitutional rights. So if somebody is out and about walking around or two or three people are in a park having drinks and violations of a, say we do do a shelter in place like some of the states have done, I can't, we can't do, we're, there's seven of us, gonna be seven of us in a city of 5,000 people. We have to recognize our resources are limited and there's a lot of, a lot of community engagement, but the community has to comply itself or it has to regulate itself, there's nothing we can do. We're trying to worry about public order, we're worried about people being hobbled together so much now and in isolation, we're worried about domestic abuse increases, we're worried about drug use and alcoholism increases and those are the type of things we're waiting to see how to react to and all the other stuff is secondary. So we can't enforce all the different stuff, but we'll monitor it, we'll document it and we'll send it out to the state licenses. So that's kind of, we still have personal rights as citizens and, and we, I don't want to place my officers in that dangerous situation of engaging multiple people, one for the exposure and two for the, just the normal physical harm that could come to them. And then that's the, what do we do with sick people? Paramedics, we met with them via conference call earlier this week, Craig Bell was able to sit on that, I wasn't. They're, they have proper procedures, they have PPEs, they're not sharing them, that's why we, we normally get them from our paramedics and our fire, they're not sharing them right now because they need them. So we still have full ambulance response in our community, we have an ambulance stationed here. If somebody is sick and cannot transport themselves, the ambulance will handle it. If needed, we will step in and help with our PPEs. And then the fire department is still attending or going to all medicals, but they've established protocols like us where they're staying outside until needed. They're going to smaller crews to limit exposure to the firefighters and if they come in contact, they're doing the same decon procedures as we are. So those are the notes that I have based on the conversations and just wanted to let you know our procedure. Once we have, now that we've gone to the emergency status, I've done up a emergency response prot, protocol, Tom and I and Cory have that and it needed to be adjusted depending upon what you said about the time off and things like that for employees, so we'll make those adjustments and we'll get them all out to you with our response.
Is there a certain rating of your face masks that you need, N95 or whatever it is, or do you not care at this stage?
That's what they say. Ours, our face masks we've had for a long time, they don't expire, ours are the same type that the surgeons wear. So as far as what they're keeping in and keeping out, short of filtered reusable air that's just yours, all the masks, even the N95 are just a best attempt, they don't prevent, you know, and, and they're meant for the sick people to keep their germs in, but as you know, air comes through the sides and top and everything, so it's more those air droplets keeping them off of our nose and eyes and, and out of our mouth and then washing our hands, so.
And do you have anyone on your staff that's allergic to latex? So if I were to order you guys a case of like latex gloves, I could just get them over there to you?
We don't have anybody that's allergic to latex in the department, I believe someone here at the city hall is, they have nitro gloves with dealing with public stuff, but we would take anything, extra large is kind of what most of the people in our department use, we can use large. We don't, we have, I want to say it's like five cases of small, of course, because they've never gotten used, so, but yeah, those type of things we take. And we have more on order through Amazon and they said they're in stock and they said they're coming, so whether that happens or not, I've heard people are getting them in, so, especially gloves, there's more gloves and masks.
Council, have any other questions for me?
Otherwise I, it's been used, especially by the mayor, please call me if you do as, anytime as the chief or the emergency management director, if you have a question, whatever that may be, get them to me. Thank you.
Josh has, Josh, first.
Yeah. Coming. All right, well, I just got back from vacation today, so I'm playing catch-up on most of this stuff. We're gonna follow the same rules as everybody else, just social distancing, everything that we're gonna do, work independently, things we don't have to do, we're not gonna do. We're not gonna go do meter checks for meeting with the public in general, we don't have a ton of that anyways, we're gonna limit all that. Obviously sewer system is a concern with people flushing stuff, we haven't, we've pulled pumps, checked them, check all that stuff every day anyways. PPE stuff, we always wear gloves and, I mean, we don't wear masks, but working independently, you're pretty much fine there. Rubber gloves, ton of them, working with water and sewer. So our day-to-day stuff isn't gonna change a ton, we can work independently, you know, you can, you're not, if you're sweeping streets, you're doing that by yourself. Trimming trees, you know, you're working with a couple guys, it's not like you're sitting on their lap or anything.
It's all maybe the exposure to the public.
Yeah, very limited for us.
The thing in the ability to spread.
Yep, yeah, yeah. And, you know, there's only six of us total, so even when it comes to lunch, we're spread out. Not a huge concern for us right now, I mean, we don't deal with anything that they do, we don't have a front desk, I mean, we're kind of kept to ourselves. So our concerns are pretty low at this point. You know, if this stretches on longer, we'll end up pushing things off, but there's stuff that we have to do every day.
So longer main breaks or something like that, you have to go out to do a call?
Yep.
Sounds like you're pretty well, there's your change.
Nothing's notable that's gonna change, just, you know, wash your hands, be cognizant of what's going on, just normal day-to-day stuff.
What about? I'm assuming we're not gonna put up the basketball hoops or do any of that stuff that would encourage people to be outside at this?
I have not even thought about that.
Yeah.
But that's a, that's a good point, no, I mean... I've also heard they've encouraged people to go outside and do things, but not do them together, so obviously we don't have to put up basketball hoops. Right now, we're just doing the normal day-to-day stuff that we need to get done. Obviously, you know, you're not gonna be dragging ball fields or, we're kind of in between seasons right now too, so there's a lot of, you know, painting that can go on and just jobs that one person can do by themselves. So it's, yes, we're still working and together in the morning, but everybody's kind of separate. So that's kind of what we got going on. And then, you know, you have utility locates the things you have to do daily, but on that, we're not gonna do anything above and beyond, you know, interacting with people.
The big issue is just seasonally, as Corey indicated, we're, we're not in street repair mode. A lot of the park setup isn't typically done this time of year, it's still too cold, too wet, et cetera. So that's a huge advantage right now.
But even if we get into the season where you're mowing and you're trimming, you're not a mower by yourself. So there's a lot of things that we do by ourself anyways and we just, you know, however long this goes, we'll just continue to work independently when we can. So, any questions?
Do you guys have the supplies and stuff to disinfect?
Oh, yeah.
If you're sharing equipment and that kind of thing.
Yes, 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 we have all that stuff. Yep, very good to go.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Yeah.
Welcome back.
One of the, from the emergency management director's standpoint, one of the awesome things while Public Works is they are equipped and they deal with pathogens all the time with sewer and water and the different things they come into and the chemicals they use on a daily basis, they're very well-equipped. So that's like one of the departments I'm not worried about because they practice that every day, goggles, safety equipment, safety gear, leather boots, gloves, you know?
Yeah, all the stuff that everybody has to do now is kind of what we've always done. So it's not really new to us.
Yeah.
Putting a glove like that would be fine.
All right, administration.
So I'm gonna have Mark talk about parks, he was able to make it down, so.
Oh, cool.
His report with regards to the impact of the parks department.
Well, you've got a copy of this and I'll make it short. I'm lucky in the sense that we have a very strong recreational park association in Minnesota, so we share a lot of information and we've been meeting two times a week, Monday, or excuse me, Tuesday and Friday online, see what everybody's doing. So, so I tried to windle this down a little bit, we, we have a survey that we go on and change, additional questions are asked and it's just really a nice template for us so that we're more or less doing the same thing. So when you go out of Elko New Market and go into Prior Lake, you can rest assured that most of the stuff is the same and the requirements are the same and I think that's what we're trying to do overall, metro-wide. And basically what we've come up with is most, most programs are canceled until four or five. So for example, if the shelter were open, which it's not, we would be canceling those programs as well too. And the two things we have canceled, of course, are the last two of our winter programs. And the first two were extremely successful, it was the best we've done in the last, in the seven years we've had it. And most of the furniture's loved having someplace to take their kids there, but right after that, as you well know, the hammer dropped and unfortunately we weren't able to continue with that. Just so you know, of the five cities that have an egg hunt, all of them canceled it and that's primarily why we were doing it as well too. And all cities that closed their recreational facilities with no immediate plans to reopen them and they're giving full refunds. You'll see when I, on the flip side, what we're doing. And finally, no city has closed their parks and playgrounds, we're working with LM CIT to talk a little bit about what kind of signage we might have to put out there, just to, to protect ourselves. Parks I've seen and it's, and, and just myself, I mean, we're, you know, walking in parks now that I do, you know, it's, it's amazing how many people are out there actually walking and using that. So I think, you know, the Parks Commission, or at least the Parks Commissioners I've talked to have said, that's the last thing we really want to do, is to close these playgrounds and the rest. But I'm also appalled at when I walk through them, how many times that, you know, the kids are going on the same playground swings and the rest of that, so we're gonna, we're, we'll talk about that on Monday. As I said, we canceled the egg hunt, we, not us, the CCEC as you well know. The Wagon Park Shell was closed till 4:17 with the exception of food shelf. They're providing food for almost 160 people around here and it's a little hard to close it. I've explained to them that it'd be nice if you keep it less than 10 and if you do that, then we've stayed within the governor's restrictions on being together as well too. We'll consider extending that date on Monday, so we're gonna meet Monday at four, much like you are here. And we've got a long list of things to look at, that's the first thing. Uh, and, uh, we've got a long list of things to look at. That's the first thing. So any input you have on that. Uh, we're well aware, I think, that, uh, a number of families have called already and wondered if we're closing it and, uh, because of course they've got graduation parties. Uh, the numbers are, uh, uh, we have one in April, uh, that takes place. That is a, uh, more of a, uh, so to speak, a fundraising thing for, uh, one of our, uh, area, uh, people that have cancer. So, uh, it's kinda hard, uh, you know, it's kinda hard to, uh, to close it down, but I'm thinking, uh, when I go to the Parks Commission on Monday, we'll, we'll probably do that. Uh, the other thing we'll talk about a little bit is, you know, we're pretty booked for May and June already. It's incredible the number of graduation parties. Haven't even put July and August on there. There, there are even more as you can, uh, might expect and in terms of closing, uh, the Wagner Park Shelter as well too. Um, one of the things we'll be considering, uh, is, is, uh, you know, how soon should we call it? In other words, uh, you know, uh, uh, how much advance notice should we give the people in May and in June and the rest of that as well too? I think what we're gonna try and do is give them, uh, three weeks, uh, and, uh, contact the people, uh, in May uh, and, uh, make that decision here, uh, on Monday as to how far out we wanna go there. But we're really conscious of the fact that, uh, you know, these are family events, a lot of people coming and the rest of it, uh, that shelter is well-used and, uh, uh, I don't see any way around it. The way things seem to be proceeding, that we'll have to do that, but we thought we'd do it on a rolling basis. We're gonna figure out how to do that. The other thing, uh, is, uh, uh, well, uh, I'll ask them, uh, not to take any new reservations, uh, as well too. So we don't compound the problem on that as well. And then we'll also, uh, consider whether to close the parks and playgrounds, uh, or just add the addition of, uh, cor- uh, coronavirus, uh, warning signs. I think my recommendation there would be to leave them open and put the signage up. If I could get, if I could figure out how to get, uh, hand wipes, I'd put them out there too, but, uh, you know, the suggestion will be, uh, once.
They would just steal them.
What's that?
They'd just steal them.
Well.
They're disappearing.
The amusing part, of course, is, is that, uh, we've had problems in the Wagner Park Shelter with, uh, toilet paper being taken, uh, and, uh, of course, Slomka's who provides our services, he, he can go out there and put one in and then, uh, you know, within an hour it's gone, you know. So we, we've got some things to figure out with that as well too. But it doesn't look like, uh, you know, we're working with the LM CIT to figure that as well too. And finally, we're just coordinating with, uh, New Prairie Community Ed and Lakefield Community Ed on providing, uh, can, information on cancellations of, uh, the programs that we have through them as well too, so that we can get all this stuff coordinated, uh, as, as well too. So any thoughts and comments would be great. As I said, uh, since we, I knew you were meeting today, it was, we decided to wait till Monday so we can get some input, uh, from it all.
Good to wait till Monday. I know we're gonna get to administration next, but I'm gonna ask that we close City Hall.
Um, I don't know if that's something that you want to consider when you're looking at closing parks and what have you.
I didn't hear.
Oh, I, I said, I, we're not quite at administration yet, but I'm gonna recommend that we close City Hall or suggest that we close City Hall. So I don't know if that's something that you wanna keep in mind when you're looking at, uh, closing parks and what have you on Monday.
Definitely, yeah, that's a little, I'll, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of the topics we'll be talking about is whether or not we close City Hall. Um, so I'll interrupt that up here. I'll give you a quick operational update before we get into those, um, discussion and direction items.
Related to, um, first building inspections, uh, we have, we are still continuing to do building inspections, but we are modifying how we do the inspections. So one of the things we have to keep in mind is that our, uh, we wanna protect our contractor, um, who is our building official that does go out and do it. Um, uh, normally, um, uh, inspections for like new construction aren't much of an issue, cause you're dealing in an open-air situation and, uh, Gary has adjusted his schedule, so he's doing those inspections primarily after hours. When he's scheduling the inspections, he's basically asking, when is your crew gone? They're gone at five. Great, I'll be out there at five-thirty. Uh, normally he'd wanna meet with the job soup onsite when he's doing the inspections. It's not necessary, it's just more efficient. Now he's just making sure they have all their documentation onsite and he's specifically going onsite when nobody else is there. New construction will continue to have inspections as required. Where you run into issues, where you're going to occupy buildings. So we are suspending at this point through the end of April, any non-time sensitive inspections for occupied structures. So an example might be I've done a water heater install. That's not a time-sensitive inspection. I have my, I finished my basement. It's my final for my basement. That's not time-sensitive. Are there certain time-sensitive inspections? Absolutely. I'm in the process of finishing my basement and I have a rough-in and I can't move forward and have my sheet rock contractor come in until I finish my rough-in inspections. Those are time-sensitive. Um, I have to close out my building permit, cause I'm looking to sell my home. I need you to finalize it. That's a time-sensitive inspection. So on a case-by-case basis, there will be determination as to how time-sensitive it is and if it is, we will schedule those inspections. In those cases, the inspector will, uh, utilize social distancing, mask and glove up when they're in for the inspections. Some of the inspections that are being completed, we're looking for, using technology for alternative means. So for example, when it's able, the inspector might FaceTime with the homeowner and then direct them to go around and look at, basically be their eyes onsite. So he doesn't actually have to go onsite for doing the inspection. That's a case-by-case, depending on the technology available on both sides. But we're looking for alternative means. So we are doing inspections, but they're either really being delayed at this point, suspended and delayed, or modify, or modifying how we're doing them to protect the public and the inspector. Um, front counter services. Right now, City Hall is open and has been operating under normal circumstances. We have talked about, um, contingency plans if we need to shut things down. One would be, reasons we might do it is recommendations that might come down from CDC or Minnesota Department of Health, basically recommending closing of public facilities. Um, right now, the last recommendation they provided is they're recommending that public facilities stay open. Um, things that we would do is we might close the front doors. So we'd basically close the front counter for public access, but we would still have staff reporting for work and we'd continue to operate as we normally do. A lot of businesses are doing that currently. If we do that, if we do close the front doors though, I probably will move staff to, um, shifts where we will limit the number of people that are in the office at any given time and I will have people coming in at different times of day. Uh, we have staff members that have the ability to work remotely to a greater degree than others and that would be the next step where we have everybody moving to remote working. For instance, Stephanie who works the front counter, eighty to ninety percent of what she does requires that she's at the front counter. She's touching paper. She needs access to paper. She's processing payments. All those things require her to be at her desk and, and moving stuff. Then you get to like me or Renee or Haley, our need to be at, in the offices maybe ten to twenty percent where we would actually need to be in the office. Um, other staff members or someone are in between. We do have, I talked with IT, there are solutions that we are in the process of getting set up to have in place. If we do that, that would allow us to work remotely. It would not be nearly as efficient as being in a normal workspace with access to everything. Um, those solutions primarily involve dialing into your existing computer and those of you that have used remote access software know that while it is functional, it is far from ideal and not terribly efficient, but it would allow us to continue to work to the degree we can. For people who are working remotely and need to come to the office, basically we'd schedule it so that people are basically coming in when other people aren't here or to again, um, to the degree we can do social distancing within the office. Um, we do feel that we would continue to be able to run the offices as we need to. The only thing that might potentially happen is if we have mu- multiple members of staff go down with, um, that are impacted by coronavirus. If we have anybody that does contract it, I will be shutting down the offices. Everybody's clearing out and everybody's working remotely immediately. Um, we have been tracking since the middle of the week, um, starting, uh, Wednesday. I did have Stephanie start tracking what we were seeing for traffic at the front counter, knowing that there might be a discussion about closure and what level of impact that might be. On a normal day, we might have between twenty, thirty, maybe even forty people that might come through City Hall for various meetings, et cetera, front counter business. Um, since obviously, uh, the coronavirus crisis has come up, we've seen a significant drop at front counter traffic. On Wednesday, we had a whopping nine people at the front counter. There isn't a single person that was at the front counter that couldn't have done whatever they were doing remotely, um, through other means, online, calling into City Hall, dropping in Dropbox, et cetera. Yesterday, we had a four people that came into City Hall. Um, and again, every single one of those could have been conducted via Dropbox, telephone call, email, or online with, through the city's website. So the volume and nature of traffic that we're receiving, um, so far, we haven't had a customer in a few business days that needed to come to City Hall. If there's a situation where we truly are communicating with the resident and there is a need for them to actually come into City Hall or have a face-to-face, those are the types of things that you can schedule and you can take appropriate precautions and experience, you know, do social distancing, et cetera. So at this point, if the council wanted to close City Hall, I think at this point, it's kind of a philosophy with regards to the optics and level of service that we wanna provide to the community. It's a value judgment, but if we close City Hall, I don't know, given the reduced amount of traffic and the nature of business we normally do this time of year, that we would, um, we would still be able to continue to function and provide service to a resident. It just wouldn't be quite as convenient. I can tell you that when I spoke with most of you earlier in the week, most of the cities in the area were still open. I can tell you at this point in the area, Shakopee, Savage, Elko New Market, and Laustell are the only cities that still have open city halls. Everybody else and everybody in Dakota County has closed their city halls for operation to access to the public. Most of those city halls are continuing to function. Staff is still reporting. A lot of them are having staff that can easily work remotely, work remotely, and they are doing some variation of shifts or limiting of people in the office. Either they're doing day trades where, for instance, Don would be in the office today and I'll work remotely and then the next day I'll be in the office and then Don will work remotely, some variation of that. Um, I guess I did wanna talk to the council and get some feedback with regards to your direction and expectations with regards to City Hall being open and accessible to the public and closure. The fact that we're going to remote meetings does to a certain extent change that a little bit and influence it. And the, again, expectations, everybody else's city hall is closing, so I don't know, again, a week ago, that might've had a different perception than I would today.
I, you know, I, I know I jumped the gun and stole your thunder a little bit, but.
Nope.
The, I just don't see any good reason to have it open to the public at this point, especially since you just mentioned traffic so far down and there's nothing that could've been done in another means. Why even? You know, if we're gonna go with the declaration of emergency, which we already have, let's just step up our precautions whenever possible and I just say we close it to the public and let city staff determine how to manage the staffing levels. Does anyone disagree?
I agree with you.
I agree.
And if that's the case, um, we'll be communicating today, a couple of things. We'll be communicating that there was proclamation of emergency in the council, you know, by the mayor and the council, that we will be closing City Hall to traffic starting Monday. We'll be open through the end of the day, but Monday morning, we'll be closed to the public. And then I'll be chatting with my staff internally about staffing or whatnot, that we, staffing changes that might be needed, necessary.
Okay.
May I suggest, uh, I don't think as, uh, emergency management society, we're doing enough, is one thing to close it, when do we open it? Do you wanna discuss protocols or a hard date or council meeting to discuss reopening?
It's a, that's a good point and that was something I didn't wanna leave this meeting without discussing. Yeah, I, we should have, I know we're all very nimble and Mole and Tommy do a great job reaching out and making phone calls. I mean, I think it's something that we just somehow assess on a week-to-week basis, that maybe at the end of each week or something like that. And I don't know if we do it via conference call or, I'll leave that up to you, Tom, to see how you wanna administer that.
So I want a direction from City Council, but, um, quite honestly, I feel I have the authority to close it administratively if I so choose, especially under the emergency declaration. But I would be communicating, that would be my intent, is we would assess that on a week-to-week basis and determine, okay, we're gonna open on Monday or not.
Now, I would like that communicated up to the public too, which I'm sure you would anyway, but.
Yeah.
Sometimes it ensures the public when they have a, this is gonna be reassessed on the, that's what the government's done, emergency executive order until this date in time. I think the public likes that, so if you can publish that, this will be reevaluated at this council meeting or.
That's, that's been the approach that we've taken, that we will be closed through X date. I think initially for closing, I would say that we would be closing the front doors for initially for two weeks and then on a weekly basis after that.
Misreading right now, State Street for over forty-five hundred new cases in the last twenty-four hours. It's prob, it's in Elk and New Market. We don't know that. We haven't had a positive test, but I think we just have to proceed as if it's in Elk and New Market and we're gonna contain it.
So at, at this point, I would like to, um, if there's no further discussions or questions, I would like to do a test run on the remote access. I know, Don, you have to get going, but I would like to run everybody.
Work blow up in the last ten minutes. I've had emergency work blow up in the last ten minutes, but if this'll just take a couple of minutes, I can pull it back out.
This only takes a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Um, what I would ask, that all of you, I was gonna do this up on the screen, but we'll try and make this as quick as possible, is you need to go into your calendar.
Or excuse me, uh, you would need to go into, yeah, your calendar and you will note that there was an invite that was sent to you for today for council remote meeting. There's a link in there that says, join zone meeting. Click on that. Now, the first time that you go in, you're gonna need to do a download to get some cookies on your, uh, machine to be able to run the, the mobile meeting and that will take a minute or so. Once you're in, um, subsequent times, you'll just go right into the meeting. So when you come in, you're gonna get a little box that's gonna, once you, is there, let me get everybody downloaded.
Mark, do you wanna go around and help on that?
Oh, it's asking, I think, how do you wanna open this? Doesn't matter. Internet Explorer or Google Chrome?
Yeah. Internet Explorer. Okay, it's gonna download cookies. Hit run. It'll take just a minute to do it.
Everybody, it looks like everybody's.
Yeah, Don's be there in a second. So once you, you wanna indicate that you want to join using your computer audio. Now, once you are in, down in your lower left-hand corner, you guys can hear my voice, with the screen, you'll see a little microphone and a little camera. If you unclick the camera, you will go into the meeting. So right now, if you were to pull it up, you'll see my lovely face and then you'll have names for the other individuals. So as you go in and you turn on your camera, you'll be able to see the other meeting participants. There we go.
Lower left. Start video. Like start video right there.
So ten years ago, this would've been in the science fiction movie where you have the evil council talking on the screens up on the wall or Nick Fury talking to the security council for Shield or whatever it is. This is normal technology today. So through this, um, I would ask everybody mute their microphones right now, cause we get hor, we'll get horrible reverb. In a regular meeting, you'll be in your own space and you can turn all that on. You'll be able to see and hear the other participants. As the meeting host, I will have a certain level of control, so if we've got fifty people talking at the same time, I can just mute everybody and then I can start opening the chat up again. That shouldn't happen if it's our size, but if we have like ten public members of the public or something there, we don't have Joe and Yavel, so that'll be a little bit of my role. We do have the ability to record, so as you see my screen, which looks very much like yours, it'll basically record that and turn it into an MP four file, which we can then post and put up under the meeting. So they'll be able to see all of the participants just rather than sitting at a table, they'll see your headshot for purposes of the meeting. It's pretty simple. I mean, is everybody in? Is there any questions about how it would operate?
Do we always access it through that link on the calendar?
Yes.
Or does it automatically put it on our desktop?
Nope, you'll just click on that link on the calendar, cause it'll be a different link each time.
Can I close on this? This is.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Obnoxious. I just have Tom's face looking at me. I just have Tom's face looking at me.
And you, you can hit gallery view and then you can see everybody.
Yes, I would recommend the gallery view, I, it's a good point.
Oh, yeah, it's on, yeah.
Then you see everybody at the same time.
So, every meeting, you'll send us a new appointment like this, and it'll be a new link.
Correct.
Okay.
Then, as we're going through, there'll be an item where I can do share screen. And then, and then as I share the screen, so if I'm doing this from my computer, I can have my own screen, I can share my screen that has the presentation, or a staff person has the presentation, we can walk through it, so you'll be able to see everybody's face and the presentation. Who will be included in that as well, Andrea, myself, Rich, Art, Cory? Cool, kids only. Yes, so all the normal people that will receive in that's included.
Okay, let me ask one last question.
Please.
Did, what, I can still hold my meeting on Monday at four, right?
It's closed to the public, so if you have a meeting scheduled and you want to have...
No, not here, if they're holding, if they're holding the meeting and it's open to the public.
Oh, I...
The reason I say that is because it's going to take you a while, the public commissioners, uh, go to Zoom, which I'm assuming...
We're not, not for them, they don't have it passed them. Dennis is not going to be out at one.
Okay, so, don't go to him, but I don't think I'm supposed to.
I would just say, work with Tom, Tom has the authority to determine that at this point.
Because we've canceled the April meeting and likely the main meeting, I, there were, I forgot to mention, what we would try and do is have this meeting, get the business done, and then have them just allow me to set the next meeting whenever I think we need to do it.
Yeah, work with Tom, you guys will figure it out.
One question before I go, what about the interviews for Monday?
I don't know, in violation, it'll be arrested by the legislature.
No, I would recommend that we still hold those, we can, we can still experience reasonable social distancing, no problem between individuals involved, it's a small group, and it is, I would consider it essential we have terms that are aspiring for commissioners, and we don't have city commissioners that are continuing to sell the spot, so I would...
Someone to reach out to, interview these things, so they know that it's still going to happen?
Yes.
That's for planning.
See, Don?
That's for planning. So, that is, that's the duty, at least serving the police to keep the buildings.
Do we have anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Motion by Timmermans, second by Novak, all in favor?
Aye.